Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining this special call meeting of the Minority Caucus. I'm so very happy to have our guest today, our interim police chief, John Drake, and our community oversight office executive director, Jill Fitchard. And I know we have some other members joining in on the call, and we also welcome you. Today is Thursday, September 30th. It's hard to believe that we are about to hit October, but we are here. So we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm very cognizant of your time and the efforts that you've made to be here. So basically, Chief, we wanted to give you an opportunity to give us an update on the investigation. If we're not violating any legal issues as it relates to the Silence No More, if you would give us an update on how the investigation is going. And also, I wanted you and Jill to talk about the memorandum of understanding. One of our agenda items for this year for the Minority Caucus was to make sure that the community oversight office had a good relationship with our Metro Nashville Police Department. So they're very happy that you all have begun to talk, but wanted you all to just come together and share with us what things look like moving forward.
Okay, first, I want to say thank you all so much for having me on. Thank you to the Minority Caucus. Thank you also to Jill Fitchard. I'll start with the Silence No More investigations. There's been several allegations made, and those allegations were turned over to the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, and they are conducting an independent investigation, which we support. As of right now, they've tried to interview witnesses. They talked to Ms. McLean, and they won't provide any witnesses for them to move forward with their investigation. So right now, they're still ongoing, but it may close after they meet with the district attorney. All of their reports go to the district attorney. We've had some side things that come from, they had some sexual harassment things that we're looking at from the Office of Professional Accountability. And so there's one allegation made against a commander in general. And what we found is that the incident was allegedly happened in Florida, but he was in Nashville working and has time records to prove he was here. And so those kinds of investigations are still ongoing, and so we should have some resolve pretty soon. One thing that we've done here is we're trying to look for if there's any other cases of sexual harassment or misconduct. And so we have Deputy Chief Loki has met with a lot of the female officers here, and so we're starting to highlight what women do here, and it's the women of MMPD. But we're also giving them a hotline directly to HR Division to report any type of sexual harassment or misconduct. And they also have a direct line to me as the chief of police for any type of allegation as well. And so, so far, right now, we don't have any that's come in, any new ones. The posters will be going out very soon. So all that to say that, you know, we take this very seriously, zero tolerance, but we need the cooperation from the Silence No More. And I've made it really clear, and I don't, and me nor this department would tolerate sexual harassment of any, any degree. And so we, when, you know, we called for an independent investigation. I wholeheartedly supported that, and still to this day. And anyone, if they don't feel comfortable with, say, even the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, they're welcome to contact the COB, in my eyes, and provide any information where we can move forward. Going to the next agenda item that you mentioned was the MOU with COB. From the time I became interim, I wanted to make sure that we had a good rapport with Director Fitchard. We've had success in that, I think it's going well. We've had meetings where we've signed at least the records release portion of the MOU, and then we've gone over the other portions. Well, we feel pretty comfortable that we can have an agreement and actually have an MOU signed very soon. We had a meeting yesterday to this degree. And then sometime during the day, I got a call from the TBI who said that they might, they might want to do a whole new MOU between the TBI, the DA, the COB, and MMPD. And I'm not real sure about having one MOU that will prolong having another MOU agreement signed. There could be some delays with the TBI and the police department. So in my opinion, when the TBI investigates any type of use of force that results in death, their investigations are so prolonged that we can't give any information to the public. And I think that kind of hamstrings the public to a degree. And so when people are needing information, even as the chief of police, I can't get information from the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation. So that could actually be a sticking point to where these things could go on longer. So before I turn it over to Director Fitchard to take any questions, I'm not sure we need to do a new MOU involving the TBI. I think that we should finish signing the MOU between MMPD and whatever's agreed upon by the COB, once they look over and finalize it, and so we can move forward and let them go about their business.
Okay, thank you so very much for that overview. I'm not real clear on why the TBI would need to become a part of that memorandum of understanding, but I would defer to Director Fitchard for her to respond or expand on the things that you've shared.
Yeah, I think as far as that, the DA, the TBI works for the district attorney, and so maybe that's why they're wanting to get involved. I think their avenue is they want to be involved in all use of force shootings. We don't have many, but I think that it would just delay being able to get information to the public, to your constituents, and to everyone. But I'll turn it over to Director Fitchard.
Hi, thank you for having me. Yeah, so this is my first time hearing that information regarding what interim chief Drake just spoke of. We have presented our own MOU to TBI, and so they, I guess we submitted that maybe three weeks ago, and so they were vetting it, and so that's news to me. I'm not really, I don't really have a good response at this point because I have to kind of digest that information. But we do have an MOU agreement with the district attorney's office and MMPD. So, you know, I, I think what interim chief Drake is saying, there's some fairness in that, and so I just need to think about it a little bit more before I respond because I'm not aware. That's my first time hearing about it. I will tell you about the MOU that we had a negotiation meeting yesterday, and I would say that that went really well. I think that we are pretty much completed with it. There was just some few things, some few language changes that needed to happen. And then I think that we're going to submit a couple, we got some questions today from Deputy Chief Hagar that we're going to respond to. But I think that we can come to a really good agreement on the one that we worked on yesterday with, just with MMPD. And that really, I think what it does is it really gives us clearer understanding of our crime scene access, as well as our access to MMPD's records, the intake process, as well as officer interviews. And so I feel pretty good with that because it kind of parallels and is parity to what OPA does for the police department. So, yeah, that would be something completely different if we had one with all four of us, unless it definitely just, you know, had one component, like maybe crime scene access. Because what I think is the biggest issue here, and I explained this to Chief Drake yesterday or within the negotiation meeting, is we want to be able to see what is happening on these fatal crime scenes or these shootings. We want to be able to say, you know, to the, to the community that we were there, we saw it. If there was a weapon involved, we saw them bag it and take it. We want to have that type of access. And so, you know, TBI, of course, on those fatal scenes, have access to the crime scene, and MMPD doesn't get access for, you know, many, many hours later. And so the agreement with TBI was to give us some up-close and personal observation of what they're doing while the scene is being processed, just to ensure transparency. Because I think that that's one of the things that, you know, our constituents want. When we talk to them and they call in, they say, well, we don't necessarily trust that the investigation is the way that it is, or there's information being planted on the scene or removed from a scene. And so that is where, you know, that's where we left with the TBI in our agreement with them. Now, if they have now taken that agreement and figured out a way to incorporate everything that we do as it pertains to crime scene access, that might be one way. But as for anything else I'm not aware of, so I can't really get more involved in that. I do think that the MOU that we have currently working with MMPD is going, the negotiation process is going really well. And I am appreciative that, you know, we haven't had a whole lot of changes to the document, especially since the first document that we had, that we signed off in January. I was able to use that document from January up until now and was able to determine where the deficits were. There were many where we didn't have the access that we needed. We didn't get the records that we needed. And so I think that we're in a better place now with the MOU.
Great, thank you very, very much. Chief, let me just say that the Minority Caucus is very concerned about the relationship because the community oversight board and the community oversight office was something overwhelmingly supported by the citizens of Nashville. And we want to make sure that the voices of our citizens are heard, and they want to use the community oversight office as their representation. So it's really, really important for that relationship to be, I think it's thieves. I know that's not a good description, considering that we're talking about law, but I do think that it really does need to be one of a great relationship and favorable at that working together to make sure that the community feels a level of trust and the transparency that Director Fitchard spoke of. And also, I just want to clarify that the Minority Caucus is interested in what happens to all minorities, including women. And that's the reason why we were asking you to come and share any updates on the investigation. And as things continue to unfold, we would hope that you would reach out and communicate with us and let us know what's going on.
Absolutely, I'll share absolutely anything that, that we get. When they release it, I'll, I can, I have your personal number. I can contact you, and we can set up another Minority Caucus call, and we'll be happy to share absolutely anything. And also, I know the voters overwhelmingly voted for the COB, and I wholly support it. And this police department, as long as, however long, however short I'm here, will 100% support the COB. I believe I've shown in my short time here that I want to make sure that we give them the same access as OPA, that we want to have a great relationship. In fact, I was meeting with someone in the mayor's office today and was telling them that I want to even have like a cup of coffee with Jill once a month to go over any gaps, anything that she doesn't like, or whatever, just to make sure we have that very positive rapport with the police department. In fact, sometimes when we have things that happen, I've actually texted or called her. And recently, I had a town hall meeting with Mount Zion, and Bishop Walker, and I've said the same thing on, on his call. So all that to say, I 100% support the COB and the Minority Caucus and the efforts to, on everyone, including women. And so we'll, as long as I can, we'll make sure that we are a good ally with the COB.
Wonderful. Jill, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I do appreciate that. I think that we had, you know, when we had an executive committee meeting as we were creating and revising the MOU, you know, I wanted to add language in our MOU because, of course, I didn't know who the chief was at the time. You know, it was still, we had the other chief, and, you know, I didn't know what was happening with that. But I think it is important to have that type of rapport. And so we did add that language, I think it was to meet quarterly. I mean, I think that's at a minimum. So I think having meetings, you know, more often with the, with the chief, whoever, whether it's interim chief Drake or someone new, to having those meetings and discussing things one-on-one, issues that we can kind of iron out, I think is a fantastic idea. And on a second point, I want to say, we also have, you know, in regards to the silent no longer and there, you know, those types of requests for investigation. The Metro Human Relations is, they can do investigations. They can do those Title VII civil service investigations. And so if, you know, if it's out of our jurisdiction, you know, I think getting a process in place with, with the police department that if a person doesn't feel comfortable, and they don't think that the investigation is independent enough if it's handled within Metro's HR, that we can have that independent, you know, investigation done either by our office, but specifically for Metro Human Relations, who has been charged to handle, you know, those Title VII types of investigations. I just wanted to say that and put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that insight and that response. So I'm going to open it up to the caucus. I'm sure they have questions. I thought I saw our health director, Dr. Caldwell, on the call. I wanted to welcome him. He typically does attend our Minority Caucus meeting, and it's always good to have him here.
Hi, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. So for the caucus, please feel free. I don't, okay, Rosie, you have to tell me again how I, I don't see the hands.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
All right. This is Councilwoman Swara. Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Councilwoman Swara. I can't see the hand, how you raise the hands again, so thank you.
All right. Yes, I want to thank Ms. Jill, and I want to thank the acting chief for being on the call. I'm excited to hear that there's progress being made on the relationship on the MOU with the, with the COB and MMPD. And that's very crucial, so I want to reiterate what you said. I think for me, though, a lot more has to still be done because even on this call, the fact that there was something that has to do with the TBI MOU that MMPD is aware of and the COB is not, shows a breakdown in communication. And I think that, I hope that there will be more done to make sure that all of those plugs are being taken care of. I'm glad there's a working relationship, but for the COB to be able to do what it's set up to do, it's very crucial that they have access and they have the information, and they have the information in time. So I wanted to say that. The other thing that I wanted to ask the chief, it's about the sexual assault allegation, the silent no more. I know there's an investigation ongoing, and I know that the chief may not be able to speak directly to the allegations. But one thing that was obvious in how the story unfolded is the culture that existed within MMPD, and the fact that a lot of people knew about this, but nobody spoke up. And so it's one thing to address people that have come up and have already made allegations, and we're walking through that investigation. But what are we doing to address this culture of abuse? What process is in place to make sure that this is not happening anymore? Or that if it does happen, we're actually catching it as soon as it does so people don't have to withstand years or months of abuse before something is being done? So if the chief would speak to that, I know that we can talk about the investigation, and we'll leave that as is, but how do we prevent something like this, especially when it's a culture or an environment, the accusation of an environment that promotes something like that? Thank you.
But thank you, thank you so much for that question. And some of these allegations go back years and have been investigated. There have been some officers that have been suspended, sanctioned. And so we've had, you know, we've dealt with it accordingly. And so I've made it clear that we have zero tolerance for any type of sexual harassment or abuse of women. And so we've started talking to our women officers to make sure they know that they're important, and it's just equally as important as the men here. We also have posters that are going out to have a direct hotline that they can call the Human Resource Division and voice any complaints that they have. They also have a line directly to me as the chief of police for any type of concerns that they have as well. And so we've made it very clear that we value our women and that any culture that may have existed in the past from some of the things that happened, we want to hold anyone accountable. And so, and we're advocating for anyone that feel they've been the victim of any type of sexual abuse or violence to come forward. And won't be any, we'll take care of it and hold the person accountable.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I was about to acknowledge you, Councilwoman.
Oh, okay, thank you. Wasn't sure if you saw the hands yet. I would like to first start off by thanking Chief Drake. I did listen to the town hall the other night with Mount Zion, and I think it really, really great, great communication, great dialogue. I really hope that we can have more community discussions like that because that is something that is needed to help build trust and relationships with the community. So I commend you and thank you for doing that. Director Fitchard, wanted to ask you, you mentioned about the MOU that you're working on with the TBI. Are you also getting any reception with doing one with the DA's office? Or is there one in place with the DA's office where you'll have, the COB would have access to crime scenes and information, 911 tapes? I know that there was an incident a week or so ago where a man, William Johnson, was shot and killed by police, and I think he was trying to get information from the DA's office. And so if you can give us an update, have you been able to get that information? Is there an MOU in place with the DA's office, and if not, is one needed?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we are working, Chief Drake has signed off on the agreement with the DA's office. So to have access to the DA's records, all of that is, it's not as cut and dry as we think it is because they have federal laws that protect their records. There's also statutory laws that protect a particular type of record, for instance, sexual assaults or children who have had, have been, you know, crimes that have been perpetuated against them. So we had to go through that to figure out which ones were, which records would be accessible to us in ongoing open cases. And so we, I think that we've hashed all that out over, it seems like, six weeks, however long, because it is very sensitive, it's very new, not only to the police department, but as well as to the DA's office and TBI. I mean, this is all new. There's other agencies across the state, but they don't do investigations. And so we had to work that out. I think that we have a strong agreement. Chief Drake has already signed off on it, we will sign off on it. The Metro Legal has vetted it and will sign off on it, but we won't be able to do that until our executive committee takes a look at the final language in it. But I think that we're in a good place and we'll have access to that. As for your other question in regards to the 911 tapes, yeah, I was a little disappointed and upset that we did not get those 911 tapes before the media did because we had requested them multiple times from the district attorney's office. Because at that point, the records were no longer, MMPD didn't have them or couldn't approve because TBI was investigating the case. And so just understanding this process and, you know, I don't want to be left out of the process. I think it's very important to, you know, our investigation that we have early unfettered access, right? And that's what we're working on. And so, yeah, when I found out about the fact that the 911 tape was released, and I had asked for it for eight, you know, eight, maybe six or seven, eight times for the records, I was disappointed. And so I did reach out to the police department, the DA's office, as well as, you know, the mayor's office, quite frankly, to find out, why is this happening? How can this get fixed? This is not the first time that it's happened that the media was able to, you know, get information before I, I was able to get it on my team. And, you know, I have been assured that that won't happen again, and there's some processes in place. I don't, I think that once we have our MOU signed and up and running, we shouldn't have those types of incidents again because the information will no longer be, you know, they were, you know, and this has nothing to do with, you know, Chief Drake, but the other administration was operating as if we were a public entity. So we were getting, so basically, we were filling out forms as if we were, you know, someone off the street getting records for cases that, you know, which was, you know, I'm not going to get into that, but it was just a very long and enduring process and a daunting task. But I think that with these new MOUs, that shouldn't happen again. And so I'm looking forward to seeing if it works. And if it doesn't, I'm going to take, you know, whoever the chief is, at this, right now, it's interim chief Drake, and call him out on it. Like, we got to be able to get these records, you know, and hopefully, we won't have these instances any longer.
Thank you so much. Chief Drake, I wanted to go back to something that Councilmember Swara touched on, and that is the culture. I know many people believe that the OPA and the FOP, MMPD is basically a brotherhood, a fraternity, sisterhood, or all of that. And with the culture, while it may not necessarily promote that type of activity, we've not really seen any condemnation for that type of activity. And when you're speaking of being a part of a family, then, you know, you don't air out the dirty laundry. And, and the community oversight was the community's representation to ensure that a fair share was being given because they are not only representatives of the community, they are experts in the law enforcement arena and investigation as well. So therefore, you know, it brings that great balance that we need in order to have fairness among those issues. So I know that I've had people share with me their concerns about not being able to get a fair share or being retaliated against because it is an environment that doesn't condemn one another.
So I will say that no one hates a bad cop more than a good cop. We are not in bed with, so to say, with the FOP. They do represent a lot of members of the police department, but they've actually disagreed with me when I've terminated people. They disagree with me when I've severely sanctioned people, given them 10, 15, 20, 30 days. So I absolutely condemn any type of wrongdoing and don't agree with, and we're not just partners with the FOP. I like the way the Office of Professional Accountability investigates officers. We've had officers terminated here recently from their investigations. And I actually worked in the Office of Professional Accountability at one point in my career, and it was just an eye-opening experience to investigate wrongdoing to other officers and actually hold them accountable. I actually was just an officer, and I had a captain, actually, that I had done an investigation on, and he was suspended, and he wound up leaving the police department. So I just want to get that out there. We condemn, we condemn any kind of bad behavior, especially violence against women. And so I stand on that, on that platform to say that we won't tolerate it.
Thank you so very, very much. I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any other questions to be asked by the, yes, Director Fitchard?
So, you know, I I would say that, you know, when we talk about culture, policing culture, it really starts at the beginning of training, right? Right? It begins because of the indoctrination and the socialization. And so what happens is, you know, just as I was a police officer and I was taught, like, you depend on one another. And so what happens is you spend all your time with officers, right? You spend all your time with with the people that you work with the most because you're you're working many, many hours. And so I think that if if there was more information regarding that your identity is not necessarily wrapped up in your profession, that it would help, I think, move the culture in a different way. Because if you notice that culture, you know, you find police officers, it takes, you know, they become who, policing becomes who they are. So they no longer separate themselves from being, you know, Joe Blow, they're Officer Joe Blow. And it's a constant. You have to have your weapon on you all the time. And I think some of this is policy driven, right? And so as they're learning how to socialize within this new frame and arena of policing, there has to be some balance, and that comes from the training. You know, and if and if that is dealt with on the front end, we wouldn't have all the problems, I believe, on the back end. And I can talk a little bit more at another time in regards to policing culture. But I believe that it has to do with the socialization on the front end.
So speaking of policy, the eight can't wait policy, reporting and recommendations. Has there been any movement on those?
Yeah, on the eight can't wait, we support all of those policies. The only one that's still on the books is is shooting at or from a moving vehicle, and that's only in an extreme situation. We had an officer that actually fired at a vehicle. He didn't hit anyone. I believe it was about three, three or four months ago, and he was terminated because it was out of policy. The only way that would be in policy is that imminent fear of danger of life is happening. And a prime example is that we had an individual downtown. He was driving down on Broadway. He was brandishing a weapon. He was seen by several people as officers tried to stop him. He went in the wrong direction in traffic, rammed several vehicles, and because it was highly congested, his vehicle wasn't able to hit tourists that were walking downtown. But he was within just a fraction of actually running over. It could have been neighborhood of ten to twelve citizens that were just walking along a crosswalk. And so there's not an outright ban on shooting at or from a moving vehicle, but everything else is. We've, we don't tolerate chokeholds. We have a duty to intervene. We deescalate. In fact, we've had situations here recently where officers are deescalated in situations where it could have been a lot worse. And and so that's what I've talked to the the Training Academy about as well, is that that needs to be at the forefront of what we do. And that's what they're teaching now is just more deescalation. I've talked to all the commanders, and it's actually more deescalation, more of being ethical and doing the right thing. And and it's starting to resonate around the entire department. And so what I've been trying to build is a friendlier, more engaging police department. And and so we're, I mean, as far as all of that, the training, eight can't wait and all that, we've made a lot of positive progress.
And I'd like to say, I think that there are some changes that are happening, and they, the police department did accept all of our recommendations except for the one that he just mentioned. There are, there are also trainers that can come out, like, there's programs that New Orleans, New Orleans Police Department is putting on. It's called the Epic Program, which is ethical policing. And then they have the ABLE program, and I'm going to send that information to Chief Drake because they'll come out and, you know, we have to, of course, with the community, we have to basically sign an agreement that we're going to, you know, hold out. It's what it is, is it's peer to peer training that really has officers hold one another accountable, right? And they sign an agreement with the community, whoever's going to represent the community, in our case, it would be us probably, and then the police department, and say that in order for us to have better policing, more ethical policing, then what we have to do is start holding one another accountable. And so I think it's, it's two great programs. They've been around for a very long time. One is out of the Georgetown Law School, and the other one is out of the New Orleans Police Department. And, you know, I think that it would be a really a good step, especially as officers are being trained on, you know, you know, holding one another accountable and the duty to intervene. I think that these would be helpful programs in training for our police department.
Yes, I I think Director Fitchard is exactly right. And in fact, I've talked to Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Paul Noel at MOPD. And we didn't talk about ABLE, but we did talk about Epic. And that is something that I'm looking at, and Director Fitchard is is right. It's a good program.
Wonderful. Thank you both for such great information. And I do like the 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 energy that I'm hearing between the two of you. So it it makes me very optimistic of the way things are going to go forward with this. Again, I don't see any hands in the queue. Anyone has a question that they want to ask, and I don't want to overlook anyone, any questions? If not, is there anything else that you all want to say before leaving the call? We do have a couple of things that the Minority Caucus needs to discuss before we end and adjourn the meeting, but wanted to give one more opportunity for anything to be said.
So this is Deputy Chief, I'm Deputy Chief, interim Chief Drake, I'm sorry. Just want to say thank you to the Minority Caucus again, and thank you, Councilwoman Hurt, for calling us to order. Thank you, Director Fitchard, for, one, just getting an opportunity to know you and been able to work with you. Look forward to accomplishing great things. And just want you to know, make it publicly known that we support you, we support the COB, and we look forward to having a great working relationship. So with that said, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to say two quick things. The first one, and moving away from the the police department, I want to talk a little about, we're having two community, I'm sorry. We're having our last Community Safety Town Hall meeting, and that's on Monday. It is for the community to call in and share with us what they want to see in a police department, I'm sorry, within a, within the police chief and in public safety. And once we get that, it's, it's going to be geared towards those who are faith leaders, senior citizens, those who are formerly incarcerated, homeless, or experiencing housing insecurity. Once we get those calls in, we will put together a report that we'll give to the mayor so that he has an idea on all four of the of the town hall meetings that we had and what people are wanting in the community, what they want to see for their communities as well as in their, in the next Chief of Police. So that's going to be on Monday. It is scheduled from five to six thirty. And then the last thing is, we put out a new policy advisory report. It's entitled Use of Force Consent Decrees. I think I sent it to you all. It has six recommendations. It is going to be vetted on a public forum on October the seventh from five to six P M. To get feedback on it, and then it goes to the board for approval. And once it goes to the board for approval, we will send it to Chief Drake for his input and consideration. And it deals with strictly the use of force policies in in Nashville. And then lastly, in the month of, in the month of October, the last of the month, we haven't secured a date, but we will have what we call proposed resolution reports. We'll have a hearing. We'll probably present two reports on police misconduct. And so those two reports will go before the board for a hearing. And then once the hearing is completed, we will send that report with the disciplinary recommendations to Chief Drake for consideration or recommendation. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up on what's happening next with us.
Well, great. Thank you very much for sharing that information. We certainly appreciate having that. I know I was able to share some of the information regarding the town hall meetings on my Facebook page. So thank you very much. And I want to thank you in chief again for excellent information and excellent job in in sharing with the Minority Caucus. If you, you can feel free to stay on the call, or or you can go ahead and continue to do what you do at this time of the day. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye bye. So caucus, I wanted to to share with you, and I forgot at the last meeting, during the Black Lives Matters protest that we had in the courthouse was damaged, the civil rights plaque that was in the courthouse was also damaged. And all of the pieces have not been found, but a good number of them have been. And they're trying to find a deposition for those pieces and wanted to know what it is that could be done. And I suggested that we might have it at a repository at Fisk University, considering that they do have an art gallery, and and they do have archives of such historical information. Also, American Baptist College, knowing that many of those that participated, and particularly John Lewis, and and especially with his recent passing. And I think it was also talked about, the State Museum was interested in having that information, having those pieces. And and I also told them that they could duplicate the plaque and put it back up, but it, but this would be the original one that's done. And and I asked if we could bring this to the Minority Caucus and get some feedback from the entire caucus before any action was taken. So I just wanted to hear from you all.
Hello? Madam Chair, it's Councilwoman Gamble. I guess I I have a question. So is it that the statue is not going to be repaired and and replaced at the courthouse? It's going, or is there a new something going to be placed there? And then we're looking to to replace the damaged plaque at Fisk or somewhere, at the art gallery or somewhere like that? I guess I'm not quite clear on what what we're considering.
Yes, so the 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 original plaque was basically destroyed and it's in pieces. And all of the pieces are not available. Or and and I don't know if they were damaged or if some pieces were never found or if they were burned to, were they unidentifiable? I'm not exactly sure. But the original plaque itself cannot be restored to its original setting. So they did not want to get rid of those pieces and thought that it would be good to have them, but didn't know what to do with them. So my question was, could another plaque be created? And they said that it could. So we could have the plaque created and replaced back into the courthouse. But then we do need to find a home for the original pieces that are not restorable.
Okay. Is there any way, and this is just a thought, that we could use those pieces in the design of a new monument or plaque at the courthouse, or is it just we need to find someplace else for them?
I'm sure all of that is possible. That that was the reason why we were, you know, bringing it to before the Minority Caucus. Because, you know, when when they approached me about it, you know, I had, you know, I I said things off of the top of my head, thought of what we possibly could do with it, but then told them that I thought we needed to bring it before the Minority Caucus to, you know, come up with some creative ideas.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Porterfield.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. Would it be appropriate for us to speak with Diane Nash to to find out maybe what her wishes might be? You know, maybe appropriate to even gift it to her, that, you know, that may be something that that she may be interested in in having, possibly putting it in a nice box or framing it or or something and presenting it to her with the understanding that a new plaque is, you know, would be made and dedicated to the courthouse. But that's just my thought on it, and if that's not appropriate, then I would think that we would definitely want to put it somewhere in some type of history museum, possibly donating it to Fisk to be displayed if they have the the capability or if they have any, or even the Civil Rights Room in the National Public Library. I would think that one of those options would be appropriate if we are not presenting it to Diane Nash herself.
And that's something that can be proposed. I I would wonder, however, how Dr. Bernard Lafayette, being that he was one of those student marches during that time, if they would, you know, think it okay that it be given to Diane? I know that she was the star, considering that she was the one that actually confronted the mayor. But all of this, I think that we can put in a letter or, you know, respond to the mayor's office and share the ideas, and they can decide on what they would like to do. So I, yes, I I have Councilmember Sepulveda, a hand came up next, Councilmember Swara.
Yes, I I I I also like Councilwoman Porterfield's idea. My, I I have one suggestion. And I don't know how many pieces the plaque is in, but I I do think it's important to keep part of the old plaque, be it one piece or be it the whole thing, at the courthouse because it was such a powerful thing that citizens were able to bring forth change and that they had their voices heard by their elected officials. And I think keeping a part of that displayed historically at the courthouse, and I don't mean the new plaque, but maybe a piece of the old plaque, I I I think that's that's very symbolic. And it shows that that there is power in in everyday citizens and not just with their elected officials.
Thank you so much. Thank both of you. Well, all all three of you, I know, Councilmember Gamble, Councilmember Porterfield, and Councilmember Sepulveda, and Councilmember Swari, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that not bringing anything new other than I just wanted to say that I like the idea of part of the old being with the new one, which Councilmember Sepulveda just reiterated as well. I think if there's a way like, as Councilmember Gamble suggested, to have a part of it as part of the new one, I think it would be great. The other thing that I thought about also is, and this again, is we have a lot of people that were involved in that that are still in town. And I wonder if we actually seek out their opinion as well. And so I think it means a lot to And so I think, um, it means a lot to us. It means, uh, it's good for us. But there were people that were there that know what it was about. And I think if there's a way to get their input, not just Ms. Nash, uh, to actually ask what they would like to see done, uh, before a final decision is made, I think will be, will be respectful, uh, uh, of them. And so that's, that's what I'd like to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think all of these are great ideas and, and Rosie, I'm sure you can, um, summarize basically what's been said and we can send a letter, uh, to the mayor's office and, uh, with the suggestions. Um, and, and see if, if it's something that, uh, could be, uh, created. I, I, you know, when, uh, Councilmember Gamble spoke of adding the old pieces to the new plaque, I kind of saw a mosaic-like piece that could really be, um, uh, outstanding, a one-of-a-kind type of, uh, uh, plaque. So, um, I, um, I, I think it's all good. Are there any other, uh, comments, um, or suggestions regarding the Civil Rights Plaque?
Madam Chair, I, I wanted to follow up. Uh, thank you for letting me know that there was other people on the plaque as well. I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Um, I thought that the plaque was only for Diane Nash. I didn't realize that other, uh, leaders and activists were on that plaque as well. So thank you for letting me know that. So I would like to-
Not, not, I'm sorry, not that they were on the plaque, but all of them were a part of the movement. Diane just happened to have been the spokesperson. And, and that's, that's, that's the only thing I was saying.
Oh, I thought, so I, I've not seen the plaque. So I thought that this was a plaque that actually like had her name on it, which is why I made that recommendation. But, um, so I just, I just wanted to say I'm a, I pulled that recommendation of giving it to her back since there were other people involved. Um, we don't have to include that in the letter.
No, I think, I think it's a good idea. I, 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 I think that's a good idea because oftentimes we are unable to, uh, recognize people and give them their flowers while they live. And I know many people have spoken about, um, trying to do something for Diane Nash because she was, uh, one of the stars, that the bright stars in that whole movement. So I think that is, I think it's a great idea. It's just that I, I wanted to make sure that other people, Dr. Lafayette and others who were a part, who may not have played the same level of role, but they were involved. And, and we would have to make sure that they, they may even think it's a great idea. And, and a, a, a real celebration can be had, that they all can participate. So please, don't, don't dismiss that at all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other, uh, topics that to be discussed? Councilmember Virtue, were you going to mention something about the E B O? Councilmember Virtue?
Madam, madam, Madam Chair, I, I apologize. Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
What am I supposed to be doing?
That you, you were going to mention something regarding the E B O, something you wanted to suggest?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Oh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, so we're on a new business for the agenda? Uh, I would encourage all caucus members, um, to sign on to, uh, to the legislation, um, as it relates to, um, the diversity positions. Um, it's going to be coming up on the agenda. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. Yes, I do think that's, um, um, a great thing, especially since we did submit, uh, as part of our, um, five demands that we wanted to ensure the diversity officer, uh, for, uh, the city. So I, I agree, think that that's a, um, um, great idea.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm wondering, because I want to sign on too, but I don't always know the things that I sign on to. So is there something that we can do that says all those who vote in the affirmative be added as co-sponsor?
Um, so what we can do i- if the minority caucus is, is good with this, what, what, what I can do, or we can, uh, indicate is that the entire minority caucus would like to sign on, um, this particular, uh, legislation.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that, that I don't have to keep up with what I'm supposed to sign on, because I really do want to sign on that. I appreciate that.
Okay. And, and it was one other, um, legislation. I know the, uh, LGBT Caucus was signing on the John Lewis, um, resolution that was submitted by, um, Councilmember Swar. And we talked about the minority caucus signing on. Uh, Councilmember Swar, you remember what that, that legislation was that we-
Yes, ma'am. It was an anti-bullying, uh,
Right.
resolution.
Right. So, um, I did mention to her that the minority caucus, I thought, would be willing to sign on, uh, the anti-bullying, uh, resolution. Now, please let me know if anyone is not, um, interested in signing on, so we can make sure that that is, uh, correct.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask also, I have a resolution, uh, that is about a young lady that was going to play volleyball, uh, but was being discriminated against and was not allowed to play because of her head covering. Uh, that's the resolution is also on, and I would like everyone to please sign on.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Council Lady Lee.
Oh, how did you know it was me? I'm on Tanaka's phone.
I know your voice.
Cause my phone hung up. But yes, so if a motion is needed, I would make a motion for that as well, that we get signed, um, onto that as well, madam.
Okay. Well, now that you've made, uh, a motion that, um, we, the minority caucus sign, all sign on the anti-bullying and on the motion for, um, the, um,
T S S A.
That's the anti-bullying and the T S S A for the volleyball.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay. Is there a second?
Say second.
Second, second.
It's been, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, I just want to say that why don't we amend it because it started with, uh, Councilmember Virtue asking us to sign on to the diversity one? And so why do that motion include the diversity, the anti-bullying and the T S S A?
Okay, so we got three things.
I don't mind that that's changed to that, because it was my motion, so I don't mind that we change the motion to that.
Okay, so it's the, uh, E B O diversity positions, the T double S double A and the anti-bullying that we are approving the, at the entire minority caucus will sign on. Any questions? All in favor, please deny. Hi. Any opposed? Many, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, madam.
I didn't take it back off, so it's-
Any, um, is there any other business to be discussed this evening?
Uh, Madam Chair, just an update, uh, just so that it's part of the minority caucus, uh, record, that, uh, we'll be filing an amendment at the next meeting to change the effective date of the John Lewis Way to January one. And this is to allow that all of the election, uh, passes before the, before the bill becomes effective. And that will be put on, uh, at the next meeting. I also want to, uh, let you all know, which will be shared at council, that we've been informed that the total cost of the project would not be more than eleven thousand dollars because most of the signs and stuff will be done in-house. The other piece of information that we found out is that in addition to not having to contact the post office, people would not need to contact N E S to change their addresses. All of that will be done automatically to help ensure a smooth transition.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Any other, uh, comments?
Yes, it's Councilwoman Gamble. I'd just like to add, thank you so much, uh, to Councilwoman Sarara and Madam Chair, uh, Councilwoman Hurt for your work on, on making that, uh, John Merrick, I'm sorry, John Lewis Way happen. I mean, there was a lot of, uh, community engagement in that and, and work done to, to make that, that happen. And I just really appreciate you all's work on that.
Thank you very much for, uh, your comments. Uh, but you know, Councilwoman Swar was, uh, did a young, young woman's job in doing so. Uh, but let me just mention this real quickly. It hasn't come up yet, but we will be filing legislation to change the Tenth Avenue, uh, North, uh, circle by First Baptist Capitol Hill, uh, to rename it in Kelly Miller Smith's, uh, honor. Um, his family reached out and Councilmember O'Connell and I both, uh, uh, agreed to it. Um, we did have one, um, building to, to submit an opposition, which we were very surprised because we didn't think that, I think that the, um, the church owns the buildings and, uh, and the parking. But I think there's a tenant that, that's, that has some opposition. Uh, but I don't think that we will have a problem. Once that information is revealed, then I do plan to speak, uh, to that, that business owner who is, uh, in, in opposition of it. But just wanted to let you all know that and to also, uh, remind you that we are still working to rename the Hadley Park to the Nashville Freedom Riders. The community center itself will, uh, continue to bear the name of the Hadley Park Community Center, but we are still looking to make that change. And I think that's it. Any other comments, questions? Did we get everything in, Rosie, that we were, that we had forgotten the last time? Okay. Thank you all so much. Uh, I hope you have a great evening. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you.
Rosie?
Yes, when you, um, jot down some things that you like for it to be put in that, um, letter to the mayor about the, this, uh-
Right. Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, I've got notes, but I want to make sure, um, you know, we're doing it the way you want it done.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure I do that. Thank you.